Good morning. Today is August 12th, 2021. I would like to go ahead and call the Lake County Planning Commission meeting to order. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So before our 9:05 item, we have citizens input. If there's anybody wishing to speak on any item that is not on the agenda, feel free to approach the podium. Jake, I don't know if we have anybody in the Zoom room that has any citizens input?
Currently, there are no hands raised in the Zoom room. If you would like to make input for citizens input, please raise your hand. You could do so by clicking raise hand on the bottom of the screen or by dialing *9 if you dial in via phone.
Thank you, Jake. I do have someone in chambers that would like to speak. Please be sure to state your first and last name, and this is not regarding any item agenda, correct?
It's a cannabis grow, but it's not this cannabis grow. Like, there isn't that many of them, so...
Can you speak into the microphone?
Is it on?
Okay. Okay.
Just a moment. Let's just clarify real quick.
What is your question?
If it's just a general cannabis issue or something he wants to speak about, but it's not an agenda item, he can still speak on it, correct?
As long as... This is the time to speak on items that are not agenda items. So as long as the subject that the speaker is discussing is not an agenda item, they can speak now.
Absolutely. Okay, thank you. Just be sure to state your first and last name.
Okay. My name is Randy Fletcher. I'm a Lake County resident forever. I graduated from Middletown High. Okay. What I would like to talk about is this geohydro report. I was wondering about the size of it, because the gronix to my place is six acres to 10 acres. Does that qualify? And then, number two, I'm going to be pretty quick on this. The permit process. I'm wondering how they can pass the permit process, allowing them to grow marijuana and use groundwater when they don't effectively check the water usage. They have no idea what the impact is. I've been in without water for two years. I know this isn't new to you, Victor, but Victor? Yeah. But anyway, we've talked about this over and over again.
If you can just address the commission, please.
Okay. I thought I was. I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Date of birth, okay. Anyway, that's about all I have to say today. I will be back. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other citizens input in chambers? Jake, do you see any hands raised in the Zoom room before I close it?
No, no hands raised in the Zoom room currently.
Thank you. We have just a few minutes before we take up our 9:05 item. While we're doing that, can I introduce the new commissioner? Our new commissioner for District 5 is Miley Fields. We have a little bit of time if you want to give us a little bit of background about yourself.
I've lived in Kelseyville for a long time. I've been an organic farmer, pears, walnuts, grapes. Moved to Washington DC for 10 years and just recently returned.
Excellent.
What else would you like to know?
Welcome aboard.
Yes, thank you. We're happy to have you.
It's an honor.
Agenda item number one for 9:05 is a public hearing to consider major use permit UP 20-13. Owner is Ryan Santiago and Igor Stolpler, applicant RMI Venture, Jerusalem Grade Farms. The proposed project is one type 3 outdoor commercial...
Recording in progress.
...commercial cannabis cultivation license and one type 13 distributor transport-only self-transport distribution license consisting of 43,560 square feet of canopy area located within 45,560 square feet of cultivation area. Location is 22644 Jerusalem Grade Road, Middletown, California, APN 136-051-04. Victor.
Good morning, commissioners, and good morning, members of the public. Can you guys hear me properly?
I can hear you.
Okay. So when this project was initially legally noticed, it was noticed on July 23rd of 2021. Staff was prepared to move forward and continue in presenting the project. However, four days later, on July 27th, the Board of Supervisors adopted an urgency ordinance. It's identified as ordinance 3106. In that ordinance, it requires all land use applicants that require a sequel analysis in regards to water to submit a hydrology report. That hydrology report is required to be conducted by a California licensed civil engineer, hydrogeologist, hydrologist, and a geologist. So I've communicated that with the applicant and the consultant as well, and staff is closely working with those individuals on them to submit a report to us. However, they weren't able to submit that report in time yet. So in order to be able to fully analyze the project and take into consideration a very important element such as water, staff is recommending a continuance of this item. And due to the fact that we have not yet received the report, reviewed the report, and there might be potential amendments that need to be conducted, staff is recommending a continuance to an undetermined date. And of course, when staff is ready and analyzes the project in full, we would legally notice the project again and go through the proper procedures and bring it back to your commission.
Okay.
Victor, that leads me to a question that also ties into the citizens' input. It's one thing I'm not clear on. Is the urgency ordinance retroactive? Or is it just these testing requirements, water requirements imposed on new applications? I believe that's what Mr. Fletcher was asking about in terms of the gronix, his property.
I would have to double-check to see if there's actual language that would make it retroactive.
Not that I saw.
Right. However, your commission and staff, this is not a ministerial process. So your commission and staff has the authority, and did before the board took action, to ask for this information if it was pertinent and necessary in order to process the application. So you had authority and have authority to require this information if it's necessary for you to make the mandatory findings that you have to make.
In terms of this continuation, is if there's a way you could tuck in information about retroactivity or have that available for us?
Yeah, of course.
Just in general, not just with respect to that one application?
Yeah. Of course, staff can definitely look into that and be able to identify if it can be retroactive.
Thank you.
Commissioner, if I may? Just to clarify your question, when you mean retroactive, do you mean retroactive as applying to applications that are currently being processed or permits that have been issued?
Well, I think... Excuse me. I think the question from the public was referring to an application that's already been approved and the build-out is underway. But new conditions being imposed on new applications, I understand, but I believe the question from the audience was whether there was any applicable retroactivity even to already-approved permits.
That's a little bit of a trickier question. I'm not sure staff...
And if it takes some time to research that response, sure.
Right. Yeah, so that will take some time to... Yes, because permits, once issued, are a right that are conferred, and changing them retroactively may not be an option.
Thank you for that, Nicole. We're looking for some type of motion from the commission as far as the continuance goes.
This is a District 1 application. Madam Chair, I move that this agenda item be continued to a future date.
I second.
Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Haas?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Fields?
Yes.
Motion to carry.
Thank you, Victor.
Commissioners. Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just as a reminder, when none of the commissioners are actually electronically joining, then roll call is not required.
Thank you. Moving on to our 9:10 item. It's a public hearing to consider major use permit UP 20-73. Applicant owner is Paul Bernaccio. Proposed project is retail sales of cannabis within an existing commercial building. Location 6914 Frontage Road, Lucerne, California, 95458. Parcel number 006-411-03. Staff. Good morning.
Good morning, Planning Commission and members of the public. My name is Mike Taylor, Assistant Planner. The applicant is proposing a retail sales cannabis project located in Lucerne, 6194 Frontage Road. It is for a major use permit, UP 2073, which is permitted use with approval of the major use permit.
It's up there on the left.
Left.
Can the audience hear the presentation adequately? Good.
Sorry, we're getting up here. Yes. That is it. That looks familiar.
Play button.
Okay, now you can go ahead.
Can we enlarge this a little bit?
Press the play button. On the left, in the corner, by the little save disk. Go up more.
Go up right here.
Out to your right. To your right again. Right there.
To five, if you want to.
Start from beginning.
Oh, there we go. Thank you.
Awesome.
So again, this is for retail sales of cannabis located in Lucerne, California, 6914 Frontage Road. It's a major use permit, 2073, and a categorical exemption, CE 2024. So the project is, as you can see here on the maps, project is located on the North Shore in the city of Lucerne, approximately towards the end of the community of Lucerne. It's APN 00641103. It's zoned C1 local commercial. The existing structure is... It's going to be located in an existing structure, which is approximately 1,783 square feet. This is a zoom-in of the area. This is the site. It's approximately 0.23 acres, 10,314 square feet. Here's the existing building, which again is approximately 1,783 square feet. It's all paved at this point. This is Rosemont Avenue, Frontage Road, and Highway 20. This is all paved here. It was previously a... It was called the Driftwood Lounge, which was previously a bar and restaurant. So they're not planning to do anything outside of the existing footprint. They're only proposing interior alterations, updates, and improvements. They will be improving and updating the fencing so that it's more secure. Right now, currently, it is chain link on this side, and then it's a solid fence chain link on this backside of the property. This is an existing outdoor yard patio area that was used with the previous business. To the north is located a, I believe it's an auto repair shop. It looks like they're storing a bunch of cars out there right now. Vacant lots on this side. There's a vacant lot here. This is all residential. And then this is public resource land here. This is the zoning for the property. General plan zone is CL local commercial. For the zoning, it's C1 local commercial district. It is a permitted use, as I had mentioned, with the approval of a major use permit. It is located in a flood zone. The applicant has acquired an elevation certificate, has been working with water resources, and so apparently it has adequate flood openings and is elevated by flood plain, thus complying with the National Flood Insurance Program. These are some site plans of the property. So this is the existing building. They're proposing 12 parking spaces, including a van-accessible ADA space. This is where the existing patio is. As I mentioned, they are not proposing any improvements to this area other than cleaning it up. All the improvements are within the structure here. There's an existing planter on the front. They're going to use that for plantings and irrigation. There's not much area here for planting. As I had mentioned, it's all asphalt. This is a floor plan of the property. So as you can see here, this is the existing structure. You can see some parking spaces here. There's existing chain link fence along the north boundary and about a six-foot setback to the property or to the structure. So what they're proposing internally is there's going to be a security foyer where they are going to vet out the customers that come in for age, then a sales area. Once they're vetted, they're going to go to the sales area. And then most everything, as far as product's going to be secured here, and as they get orders in, they'll bring it out to the sales area counter here. They're proposing, at this time, they don't have specifics on the signs, but they are proposing sign elements that are within accordance with dark sky. It's going to be illuminated, a wood backboard with metal letters. They're proposing two signs, which will be in accordance with Article 45, Section 21, 45.11, which means they're limited to the amount of signage area they can have based on the frontage of the property, occupancy frontage of the property. Let me be specific on the building. So depending on how wide the building is, there's a percentage of that, which is 0.5 of that frontage length that they can have in square footage for the sign. They can have a maximum up to 16 square feet, and they're allowed two signs on the building. These are some site photos. Apologize for the dark. This wasn't taken in the correct direction, so it looks a little dark there, but that's the building there, and this is looking kind of northeast. We conducted a site visit in July with the building department to look at the property. This is the front of the building. It's basically... It's not wood, but it's concrete, kind of concrete material here with slate roofing. This is the existing sign, which they are going to replace with the new sign, and it will have down lighting and billboard, that sort of... Or wood backing with metal letters. This is the south-facing side of the property wall here. This is parking. It'll have parking here with tire stops. The ADA parking will be approximately in this direction. This will be the access door to the inside of the building. This is the north-facing side. To the left of the structure is the auto repair car storage business that I had mentioned earlier. This is the backside of the property. The patio area I hadn't mentioned, they're going to clean up, is located here. Additional parking. And then this is approximately where the back property line is. They do own this property here, which is zoned R3. They have no plans for it at this point in the future.
Michael?
Yes?
Could you go back a couple of pictures, please?
Sure.
One more? That's fencing that will be replaced, correct?
That's, yeah, with an opaque fence. I'm not sure... They hadn't mentioned what type.
Right. That doesn't look terribly secure.
No. They planned to do... They have a fairly robust, secure plan for the property in terms of fencing cameras and security personnel.
Sure. You'd mentioned that some fencing was better than others, and that leaps out at me.
And they have done a survey on the property, so when I mentioned this was six feet, it doesn't quite look like that there. So they did have a survey done, so it looks like that will be addressed appropriately. Let's see here. This is Frontage Road, and right here, well, here's the structure, and this is... They're proposing parking here. They are limited on area in terms of backout space and that sort of thing, but that's the way this particular property has functioned in the past. So they're kind of... You know, that's kind of the status quo of this particular property. So we reviewed it in terms of Lake County General Plan, Sherrill County Communities Area Plan, County of Lake zoning ordinance, and that's all spelled out in the staff report, and the conditions of approval, and they are in accordance with that. As mentioned earlier, it is a permitted use in the C1 local commercial district upon issuance of a use permit. The particular project is exempt, and we're proposing a categorical exemption, CE 2024, based on categorical exemption Class 1, Sec. 15301, which includes existing facilities. And here we have the major use permit findings, no impacts to surrounding communities, product shape, its adequate size, streets, highways, or accommodate project. It is on a public street, and we did send an RFR to public courts, and they had no comments on it because it is an existing structure. Additional approvals, as in the conditions of approval you may have reviewed already, we'll address all of these, approval, aesthetics, and noise. Geology soils, those are typically relevant because it is an existing structure. Timing mitigation, yes. Cultural resources, it is an asphalt property. It's completely covered and disturbed, but if they should happen to be doing something out there, then they would need to address the conditions of approval for cultural resources. Recommendations approved, major use permit 2073, and categorical exemption CE 2024. And any questions?
Thank you. Any questions from the commission before we open it up for public comment?
Thank you.
Okay. That being said, we'll go ahead and open this item agenda to public comment. Anybody in chambers who wishes to speak or in the Zoom room? Pause. Hold on.
Do you want to pause this?
Oh. Is the applicant available? Or did you want to speak before we open it up to public comment? Or you can approach the podium, of course. Please be sure to state your first and last name.
Paul Bernaccio, I'm the applicant.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you for having me.
Speak a little bit more into the mic.
Sorry. Thank you for having me. No, I really just appreciate the opportunity to even present this project to you guys, and I look forward to just answering any questions that you or the public might have.
Okay. Excellent. It's nice to know that you're here. So we will go ahead and open it up to public comment, and then you could have a chance to speak again.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. Hi. My name is Kevin Wasick. I live on Rosemont Drive, just about four houses from where this thing's going to go in that. And I'm not going to dwell on a lot of things. I'm going to get to the point. I've lived there, and my family's lived there, for 57 years, and this is three years old. We have a beautiful beach, which is the biggest beach in Lake County, where people can go down with their kids and enjoy the lake and enjoy what we have. We put in, I would say about five years ago, we put in a neighborhood watch because we were having so much crime in there. We had an old hotel, the Lucerne Hotel. Riviera Hotel was a big drug place. They did meth, they did marijuana, they grew it. It was a mess. We had a shooting in there. We got it taken care of. The neighbors all worked together to get it safe. We have entirely too much marijuana in the area. We have illegal grows up on panoramic. We have people coming down, selling their marijuana down by where the Driftwood is on the frontage road. Just the other day, we had a domestic dispute across the street from this bar. There was a shooting. A person that had the shooting broke into this bar. As good-fake neighbors, we helped the guy and fixed the back of his fence to keep people from breaking into this building. My point to you guys is have all the places to put in one of these dispensaries. This is the worst place. You're right on residential. We have kids on the street that play. We have people that walk their dogs right in that area where he wants to put this in there, and this is not a good place for this. As far as his fence that he's going to put up, if he puts that fence up and then people drive their cars in there, you won't have enough room to get your cars through there. We have the big garbage trucks that come through there to service our area. This is a bad deal all the way around. It's going to ruin our property value. We've already got too much marijuana in there, too much meth in there. I've called the sheriffs myself and asked for extra patrols, and this is a bad deal. I miss this guy. Would have come to the neighbors before he spent all this money and gave us 19 what he wanted to do, because putting this in there is nothing that's going to do, is going to drive our prices down on our homes. Our kids are going to be out on the street, walking around. Older people are going to be walking their dogs. This is a bad place. Of all the places to put one of these in here, why put it in a residential area? It's ridiculous. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Good morning. Just be sure to state your first and last name, please.
My name is Mahalani Arciza. I go by Lani. I am the chair of the Lucerne Town Hall Council to the Board of Supervisors, and I first want to say that I really wish that this gentleman would have came to the town hall and explained what his plans were for the community. I live in the first Riviera, and it does concern me because we do have a lot of elderly neighbors, as well as children, that walk their pets throughout the first and second Riviera. And what concerns me the most is maybe having that kind of traffic through there and what it will do to impact our community. And so I realize that marijuana is legal in California, but we must be responsible and recognize that there are certain businesses that need to be in business location and not a residential. So I invite you to please come to Lucerne Town Hall meeting. We will be there next Friday. I'll give you my number. I would like to put you on the agenda and then explain to us, you know, why you picked Lucerne in a residential area, what kind of impact are you going to have in our community that could bring some positiveness, maybe jobs? I'm not sure. And also if you recognize the negatives that will come along with that type of industry. And I'd also just like to know, you know, how long have you lived in Lake County? Have you even lived in Lucerne? So those are all questions that, you know, I can address with him personally, but I just wanted to put it on record. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just to clarify for the public, this is...
neighbors, as well as children, that walk their pets throughout the first and second Riviera. And what concerns me the most is maybe having that kind of traffic through there and what it will do to impact our community. And so I realize that marijuana is legal in California, but we must be responsible and recognize that there are certain businesses that need to be in business location and not a residential. So I invite you to please come to Lucerne Town Hall meeting. We will be there next Friday. I'll give you my number. I would like to put you on the agenda and then explain to us, you know, why you picked Lucerne in a residential area. What kind of impact are you going to have in our community that could bring some positiveness, maybe jobs? I'm not sure. And also if you recognize the negatives that will come along with that type of industry. And I'd also just like to know, you know, how long have you lived in Lake County? Have you even lived in Lucerne? So those are all questions that, you know, I can address with him personally, but I just wanted to put it on record. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just to clarify for the public, this is zoned appropriately for commercial use.
Good morning. Please be sure to state your first and last name.
Good morning. My name is Leilani Schwartz. I live at sixty-four eighty-one Rosemont Drive. I'm five houses up from this proposed site. I apologize, first of all, because I wrote a letter and I addressed it to the Board of Supervisors when I should have addressed it to the Planning Commission, and I don't know if Mike has shared that with you, but I hope at some point before you approve this permit, that you'll have a chance to read it and consider the concerns that are addressed there. Some of them have already been addressed, traffic is one, the impact on a residential community. And while the pictures did a great job of showing the Driftwood Lounge, they did nothing to show the community that surrounds the Driftwood Lounge. I understand these are commercial properties. When I moved here seven years ago, the Driftwood was a trouble spot. There were fights. The sheriff was there every weekend. It was loud. It was raucous. Next door, Bob's Automotive, which now is closed, I hope permanently, because I don't know what their zoning permits, but I don't think that it permits them revving their cars up until two and three o'clock in the morning and using the frontage road as a test track for those cars. It's some kind of a racing entity that, that they address. And finally, as was previously addressed, when I moved in, the Riviera Motel was there. And again, the drugs, the shootings. So in seven years, I've watched all three of those commercial enterprises fold. That has been positive for the community. I've watched more houses be sold as homes as opposed to what I call revolving door rentals. We no longer have squatters in entry, in empty properties in the neighborhood. I don't have a personal problem with cannabis dispensaries. I have family and I have friends that utilize them. I have a problem with its appropriateness in this location. And I hope that you will listen to the members of the community that are impacted by this. Sadly, Mr. Bernaccio, I hope I'm pronouncing your name correctly, doesn't live in our community. None of you live in our community. And I wish, before these things get to this point, somehow the community would be made much more aware of proposals like this. I thank you for your time.
Good morning. Please be sure to state your first and last name.
Patricia Dunham, sixty-eight forty Rosemont, next to Mr. Benucci's property. I worked for civil engineering Slaven Corps in Tacoma, and I have noticed, since we've lived there five years, no business in this commercial district. And when Riviera one and two were built, they were very remote, and this property, I'm sure, was set aside so that people had availability. There was a laundromat. There's a building was supposed to be a grocery store. None of this, except Bud's Auto, has really been a business. As a civil engineering background person, I request that you look at this property for changing it to residential and dropping the non-needed commercial. This would be a great benefit because you have a whole block of property with lakefront that could have beautiful homes, could enhance us. So in reading the information that you mailed to us, there were two things that came to my attention. Exemption. What is he going to be exempt? What are we exempting? We don't want it. We don't need it. Nuisance. With Bud's Auto, we have, all the neighbors have called, and all of our complaints have been ignored. So when we have a nuisance, which there were like twenty, twenty-five motorcycles that went up the twenty, Highway twenty, last weekend, if they had seen this pot store and say seven of them were allowed in, I don't know what the capacity is, guess what? The others would be ripping around on their bikes all through the neighborhood. We have this lovely road that goes up the bluff, and that would be a nuisance, and you're telling me from previous experience nuisance is ignored. Also, ten-year plan. To me, that's a ten-year jail term for all the residential properties we have built up. The neighborhood is looking great. It used to be a rundown, and maybe a lot of you think it's still rundown, but you should drive through. And to have this over our heads for ten years is like a jail term. I request that this property, all of it, be looked at for changing the zoning from commercial to residential. It has not been needed. There is no widening of the highway on twenty for people to come off and on. There's a bluff. You come around the corner and there's the store, the building, and.
I'm sorry, the three-minute allotted time for proposal comment has expired. Would you please complete your statement?
If you wanted to finish your statement, you're welcome to just complete what you were saying. I didn't want to have to cut you off.
Okay. Highway twenty isn't a good access ingress at this point. There's a bluff with a short view for the turnoff, and there's no widening, and there's no way to widen it to make a turnoff, like there is. Nice has some beautiful wide roads for commercial, even Lucerne in its limited capacity, but this area at Highway twenty has none.
Thank you. Anyone else in chambers wish to speak before I open it up to the Zoom room? Okay. Jake, do we have any hands raised in the Zoom room?
Yes, we currently have several hands raised in the Zoom room. The first hand I have is from Tressa. Tressa, have given you permission to speak?
Good morning. It's spelled differently. It's Teresa. I'm Teresa Thorley. I'm a former science teacher, and now I work with new teachers, and I'm still working with Lake County Schools through the Office of Education. I live on Monte Mar, which is an additional block over from Rosemont, and I have the same concerns as my other neighbors. This, this neighborhood over the last few years has really become a vibrant, family-oriented neighborhood with many dog walkers and kids playing and riding their bikes, and it's, it's just completely changed, and everybody stops and talks in the streets to each other. And we, I just don't want to see a business come in that's going to change the feel of that. I was driving through Lucerne, and I noticed at least seven other open businesses in Lucerne proper, in the actual true business section of Lucerne. A lot of sites where this business could be going in rather than in our little residential neighborhood. So that's my two cents. I also, my neighbor, she couldn't be here today, and she wrote a letter, but I'm not sure that it reached you. Her name is Deborah Jones, and she also lives on Rosemont. And she asked me to read you what she wrote. She said, "This is a residential neighborhood with many childrens, families, and senior citizens, and the seniors who are walking their dogs feel safe and secure." And she says that cannabis is known to have adverse effects on those who face mental health challenges, and with the higher levels of today's THC exacerbating mental health conditions. Lucerne already is home to behavioral health to help those facing those challenges, and that she feels this location will just make their jobs more difficult. She's also concerned about the homeless population, and having readily available cannabis in a residential neighborhood is not healthy. I want to point out she's a working Lake County social, social worker. And, I'm sorry, I lost my place in her email, but I sure you, I think you probably get the gist of her concern as well. Thank you so much for opening this meeting and letting
All right. The, the next hand I have raised is from Natasha Sokolowski. All right. Looks like you're muted. Will you please confirm your first and last name?
Natasha Sokolowski, and I am the co-founder and COO of BM Compassion Center, which is a cannabis microbusiness located in Clearly. I am on the Zoom call to voice support for Mr. Bernaccio. I have been a colleague of his for a couple of years now, and I think he's a very respectable person, and I think that it's important that we voice gratitude for our county for being open, to being a catalyst for positive change for our, our, our industry. There's a lot of concerns of the neighbors that I totally understand as well, but I think that there needs to be some educational efforts to calm them, because many of the people in this industry are family, young families that have kids and want kids or want pets, that want to be old with their children, and they want to ride bikes, and as far as the bikes go, that's all prohibition anyways. Most bike, bike riders don't consume cannabis, so I don't think you'd have to worry about that there. But I really just want to, you know, express that cannabis is therapeutic. It's not an illicit drug. And the other concerns, like for the meth and cocaine, of course, those are huge concerns, but I think most of the people that are professionals in this industry definitely want that out, so that would be a benefit for the community there. So that's all I want to say. I support this project. I think our entire county needs to be educated a little bit more so, so everyone can be brought up to date with the current actual facts of cannabis. And that's all. Thank you for being supportive for our industry to Lake County. Thank you.
Jake, any other hands?
Yes, there are currently two more hands. The next hand I have raised is from Erin. Erin, given you permission to speak, looks like you're muted. Will you please confirm your first and last name?
Thank you. This is Erin McCarrick from Clearly.
Thank you. We can hear you.
Awesome. Yeah, this is in support of this project. The applicant has a really well put together proposal within the correct zoning and is committed to working with the county and meeting all of the contingencies within that, including parking and beautification. And additionally, in terms of some of the concerns with safety and crime or anything like that, Clearly, the city of Clearly has actually noticed a decrease in some of the, you know, cannabis-related, you know, potential cannabis-related issues, and especially when it comes to dispensaries or delivery dispensaries or commercial cannabis buildings, because there is such a commitment to security and to ensuring that the legal cannabis industry is able to survive and have a good reputation. And knowing Paul and knowing his commitment to the legal community and the positive reputation that it wants to build, and to the community of Lake County, building, building that community here, I believe that Paul would absolutely be willing to be a participant in this community and meet the needs there. And his security plan is top-notch, and I really think that it actually could benefit some of these, the issues that the first gentleman spoke of in terms of potential fights or anything down there. Additionally, this, I was, I was just going to say that because of the increased security, some potential crimes have gone down. So I support this. Thank you commissioners for the opportunity to speak on this, and I'm sure Paul would be happy to answer any of the questions. It's also really cool to see him honor the historical continuity with the naming of that building. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. The next hand I have upraised is from Damian Ramirez. Damian, I have given you permission to speak. And it looks like you're muted. Will you please confirm your first and last name?
Good morning. Damian Ramirez from Lake County Groan. Just voicing my support for this project. I've worked closely with Paul for a couple of years running now, and must say, he's an honest, respectful businessman, very active in the, in the legal cannabis market. I don't only respect him for his business acumen and consistent and honesty. You know, I consider him a personal friend as well. This, this project, reading it over, seems very well planned. The security measures seem to be very strong. It's the exact type of proposal, you know, that can generate the jobs and the tax revenue that, that we're all interested in seeing within the county. I, I completely understand some of these concerns that, that are raised by the, by the other citizens, you know, at, we often see the, the, some of these issues, the legal market issues get kind of conflated with the legal industry, and, and I think the commissioners, as well as many of the people in the industry, understand that, you know, that they don't run parallel. These are completely different worlds. This project is proposed, and, you know, it's in a properly zoned commercial area, and as long as the regulations are followed by Paul, many of the issues raised by some of the neighboring parcel owners, you know, I think they will be avoided. Through my experience with working with Paul, I'm confident he will follow the requirements. I know he does, and he continues to do with his other projects as well. Again, I can understand the neighboring owners, you know, they're very concerned with the new commercial projects starting up in that area. Sounds like the track record for previous businesses have been pretty tough there, you know, bringing in some seemingly major problems from the sounds of it. I just don't think it's really fair or logical to deny a new commercial project, you know, that has zero to do with these previous projects based on, on that sort of logic. This project should be judged on its own merits and its own plans and what it abides by as far as the ordinance and the regulations go for this specific business. So, thank you as always for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. Any, Jake, if you don't have, do you have any other hands in the Zoom room?
I have one more hand raised in the Zoom room. The last hand is current. Oh, and that hand has dropped. I, it's back up. Okay. This last hand I have up is from Jennifer Smith.
Okay, and then after that, I'm, I'll bring it back to chambers.
All right. Jennifer, looks like you're muted. Will you please confirm your first and last name?
Jennifer Smith.
Great, we can hear you.
Great. I wanted to call in and speak on support of this project. One of the most important parts of Prop sixty-four and its passing is that we allow safe access to cannabis. Allowing safe access leads to diminishing illicit market, which is what both the industry and the community leadership want. This project is zoned correctly. Paul is a leader in both the cannabis community and the community at large. He is on the board of the Lake County Cannabis Alliance and is an active participant in making sure that compliance is adhered to by our membership, compliance is adhered to by the industry at large, and I think that the neighbors should be happy that if any applicant is coming in, that it is Paul. He's going to run a legitimate first-class and tightly-run operation. I think it's great to see another dispensary coming into the community to once again allow that safe access, access to patients and recreational users. So I hope that the commission will move forward and approve this project. Thank you.
Jake, I'm going to go ahead and, if you don't have any other hands raised, we can bring it back to chambers. I do have another comment.
All right. Yeah, I currently have no more hands in the Zoom room.
Okay, thank you. Feel free to approach the podium. Just be sure to state your first and last name.
Hi, my name is Ted Dunham. I live a few hundred feet. I'm one of the closest properties behind this proposed new business, which. which a lot of people are giving glowing terms to, which if it were in Nice or Lucerne, I would agree with. But where it is trying to open, when I saw activity down there from my place, I can clearly see the property and the parking areas from our house. I walked down there and noticed the two gentlemen milling around, so I talked with them. I asked them, "What's going on here?" They said, "Oh, we, we just bought this place and, and looking at what we're gonna do with it." I asked them what their plans were, and they would not tell me. They wouldn't admit that they plan to open a dispensary. And I, when I found out what their plan was eventually, I understood why they didn't want to tell me, because it would raise concerns in this neighborhood. And later, you know, months later, same thing, I saw them down there. I went again and just to chat with them, try to find out what their plan was. Again, they wouldn't tell me. And again, I assumed it was going to be something that the neighborhood would be against. And that is, that has turned out to be true. Right behind the property, they own another piece of land with, is covered with trees and brush. We've seen a lot of questionable people visiting the area to do their drug purchases in front of this tavern. And I'm concerned that people, once this business was to open, would be showing up, camping out in this brushy area, waiting for it to open or waiting for a customer that they could approach and ask them to purchase something for them, which many liquor stores have that same problem. So there's a lot of issues that could bring a really bad element to this qualified business in a residential area where it should not be permitted. And as far as the neighboring business, currently called Budz Auto, when there was a purchase by a couple of gentlemen of that property, we were told that they were gonna open or continue doing car repair, oil changes, all this stuff. And immediately, what they were really doing was bringing in damaged cars so they could take the engines out, modify them, put them in a side show or slideshow, these cars that do their donuts all over the neighborhood, and use it as a test track, see how fast they can go. And like Lonnie said, they modify engines, and we hear them at midnight, we hear them doing donuts in the tavern parking lot and on Frontage Road. And you see all the donuts on Highway 20 in that area? That's from them. So, and when we complain to either the CHP, the sheriff, or code enforcement, we never hear from them, or they say, unless we see it, we can't tell anything about it. So...
I'm sorry, the three-minute allotted time for public comment has expired. Please make your statement.
And whenever they bring in a car to modify, the body stays within their property. We've seen cars sitting there since the five years we've lived there. They take out the parts they want, and they just park it in their yard. It's become a junkyard. But we're not getting any satisfaction from any entities, like a nuisance call, totally ignored. And I'm afraid the same thing would happen here. Who's gonna come out and deal with a nuisance?
Okay.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you for your comment. Anyone else wish to speak in chambers before I close public comment? Okay, Jake, there's no other hands in the Zoom room before I close public comment?
Uh, we do have more hands in the Zoom room. I have two hands. Should I start working on those?
Uh, yes, please.
All right, the first hand I have up is from Natasha Sokolowski.
If, if, Jake, if we could just try to stick to public comments that haven't, or people that, from the public that have not already previously spoken, please.
Okay, I do have a, a new hand raised. I will move on to CB. Uh, CB, I've given you permission to speak.
Hi, can you hear me?
Uh, yes, we can hear you.
Um, I really appreciate the...
Can you, I apologize. Can you please state your first and last name?
My name is Carol Bear.
Thank you.
Um, I appreciate the legalization of cannabis, and I do go along with all the, uh, the good aspects of it. However, I feel that this location is really, this is a residential neighborhood. It's just not, it's not a, um, it's not for business. And I don't see, are, are, are we gonna grow this area as a business area? Or are we gonna be a residential area? I think that this is a residential area, and I'd like to see it stay that way and grow that way. I don't see that this little frontage area as being a real viable public access area. I think there's a lot of danger right there, turning onto Rosemont. The, it's, it seems to be an area where people speed up because it's a straightaway. And I do support what they want to do. I just don't really think that this is the right location, because it is a residential area. And I don't want to see our area grow. I just don't see it as a business. Anyway, that's it.
Thank you for your comment. No other new hands in the Zoom room, Jake?
Uh, correct, there are no other new hands in the Zoom room.
Okay, and I don't believe any, anyone else wishes to speak in chambers, so I will go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to the commission. One, yes, into the mic.
I do have one update for the record. The applicant has requested a time and change of operation. He previously requested 10, or proposed 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM. He would like to update the record from 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM.
What was the original time?
10 to 6.
10 to 6.
Any comments from the commissioners to the applicant or to staff? Is your mic on?
Yeah. Yes, and I'm kind of new to this, so please, Nicole, stop me if I'm speaking out of order. But I'd like to address the applicant and ask him to respond. In our general plan, 3.7 goal LU4, the general plan states that we should promote the development of commercial uses that are compatible with surrounding land uses and meet the present and future needs of Lake County residents, the regional community, and visitors. And clearly, from today's proceedings, you can see that there's some conflict. How would you propose to address those and mitigate them?
Paul Bernaccio, so the...
I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Better, yeah.
So the first thing that I want to point out is that it's actually very, very difficult to find a location that qualifies in Lake County. Most of the lots here are empty. And so some, a lot of them that qualify, you do have to put an entire new building on it. I assure you, I looked at every property in Lucerne, which also has a lot of medical and rehab facilities, which I have to be within a certain distance of, schools, all, senior centers, all kinds of things. I've looked from Middletown to the Oaks to Upper Lake. And this, as far as I can tell, is the best location that qualifies. It's been commercial, and it's always been commercial. If I was going to reopen it as a bar, we wouldn't have to be here today. I could immediately start staying open later, serving alcohol to people as long as I can afford the liquor license, which I think is a much bigger nuisance to the neighborhood. And the neighbors have voiced that as well. In terms of it being good for the area around it, the comment that actually affected me the most was the one that was made by Kevin, because Kevin and I speak quite a bit. We spoke last week. We text each other. We have issues of damages that have been done to my property that I pay for out of pocket very often, very often. We have cars that are often dumped there, just left on my lot. It cost me $300 a car to get it removed. I've owned this building for almost five years, okay? And now we're finally getting to my hearing. So I've been just pouring money into this place, including the mortgage, to make sure that it makes the neighbors happy. And they call me, and they say, "Paul, there is another car in your lot." Kevin himself last week called me, asked me to get a car removed. I got it removed the next day. He called me, said, "Man, I don't know who you called to get that thing taken care of, but you sure got it gone quick." So, yeah, it cost me $300. Took it off the lot for you, because it's gonna be a nuisance. And I don't want it to be a nuisance. I want to be a good member of these people's community. I want to be their neighbor. I may not live there, but I own a building there, and I'm invested in the area. And, and I think, I think personally, five years from now, I believe these people will be happy that I'm there.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions for the applicant while he's up there?
What was the reason for the change in operating hours?
You know, so basically, we looked at it as 11 to 7 is a really short, or 11 to, 10 to 6, actually it was. It doesn't give people time to come home from work and go to the store. Most people are leaving their jobs at 5. They're not gonna make it there by 6. Also, we could do deliveries and pickup from 9 to 9, which would mean that if somebody gets there after 6:00 PM, they would have to sit in my parking lot. If I have 10 people waiting to do an order, I've got 10 people sitting in my lot on their phones waiting to place an order, just so my employee can walk out the front door and hand them, hand them their order, right? I think that's more of a nuisance than it would be to let those people come inside. And that way, we don't have the traffic through the lot, quite the way that is. Because as it's proposed, I, I can do deliveries and pickup from 9 to 9.
Thank you. I just had something, and it went out of my head. It'll come back. I'm not sure how the public is, you know, familiar with how your retail business is going to work. But I, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, they pull in, they show their ID, everything is checked. They go in, get their product, and they leave. So it's not, it's not a campout, it's not people smoking in the parking lot or smoking on site. It's, it's nothing like that, correct?
No, not at all.
Just, just to kind of give the, the public a general idea of, of how it works, because I feel like that's a big concern for the, for the neighbors.
Yes, yes, yes. And absolutely, it's sort of, again, if we can draw the comparison to going to a liquor store, right? You don't go to a liquor store, buy a bottle, go out front and start drinking. That, that's a nuisance, and it's on the, it's the burden of the owner to make sure that you are not the nuisance, you know? So absolutely not. We don't want people hanging out and camping in the area. The other thing is, inside of our plan, we are gonna have a security guard who's in the parking lot all the time. Okay, so before you get to the door, there's somebody standing there. And there's somebody who's gonna be looking around to make sure. You walk in, you walk into a secured, locked area, where before you even can get anywhere close to the cannabis, you have to create a profile, we make sure that you're logged in, you're already on camera, you know? We, we really make sure that you are watched from the moment you get on that property, you know, until you get off the property.
Another thing about the access point for, for the business itself, I'm familiar with the area. If you're coming from Clearlake Oaks and you want to turn onto Rosemont directly off of Highway 20, it is a pretty...
Tight.
It's a pretty tight little, like, very, very minimal margin for error, okay? You just pull in and go. Is there a protected turn off of Highway 20 onto, I believe it's Laurel Dell, off of the highway, where there's a protected turn lane coming from Nice?
Oh.
Into that area? There is a protected turn lane to turn in right there. Is there another turn lane that would allow access from Highway 20 onto Frontage right there as opposed to Highway 20 to Rosemont?
Not that I know of.
Okay, okay. Personally, if I was driving that way, I would, I would go past Rosemont
Right.
and take a better access point and onto Frontage.
And, and maybe, maybe that, that's something that eventually at some point, the business could, could try to...
Kind of promote or just kind of...
Kind of promote, yes, promote the fact that, you know, this is older infrastructure that may need to be updated.
Excellent. Any other questions?
No questions.
Concerns?
Comments, but no questions.
Do you have a comment? You can have, you can state your comment.
Sure. I really appreciate the public's input today and understand the strong feelings that have been generated. But again, it is not just a residential area. It is properly zoned for a commercial business. As the applicant says, if it were a bar, he'd be open for business already. I've never, I never frequented the Driftwood, but I've gone past it many times. And cars are there for hours at a time parked, rather than at dispensary, where you go and do your business and leave. The auto body shop, the old hotel, certainly didn't have security guards vetting everybody that went inside with 24/7 cameras, security fences, and the like. The patio in back, I can assume on evenings, there would be perhaps music, could be loud conversations, cigarette smoke. None of that would be happening in that patio area under this application. We don't have the power, based on reviewing this individual application, to change the zoning status from commercial to residential. That is not the application that is before us today. In terms of trips per day, the application suggests up to 10. I can only imagine there were more than 10 trips per day to the Driftwood and that the cars remained for longer. And if the road is a little bit iffy, why, it would be more of a concern to me if people were leaving that area impaired after spending a few hours at the Driftwood. So to me, this fits with what we have recognized in the ordinance as something that should be done and can be done. It's zoned appropriately, and I'm prepared to support it today.
Commissioner Chavez?
Uh, sure. Hello, everyone. My name is Everardo Chavez, Commissioner for District 2. I believe that this application, or this business going here, will take care of a lot of the security concerns that, that the public may have from that community. It might push, you know, the current, like, crime and stuff out of the area due to the surveillance and security measures that are taking place. So I, I, I mean, I may not live in that community, but I, but I do see this, like, from an outer perspective, that it, it can help, that it can help that. A lot of people might not see cannabis as, like, a positive, but the way that the business is gonna be working, it does not seem like people are gonna be, you know, camping out there and causing a nuisance. And I agree with Commissioner Hess that if it was a bar, you know, it would definitely have the neighbors a little bit more upset with the hours of, of operation. But I feel like this is, is gonna be, like any other dispensary, very quiet in and out. You know, it's not a hangout spot. So I'm, I'm feeling like I'm willing to support this application. That'd be it. Thank you.
Could I have one comment? I happened to stumble upon an exhaustive study conducted by UC Davis a couple of weeks ago that found a direct correlation between the presence of dispensaries and a reduction in the number of opioid overdoses that occur because of the availability of a dispensary when a person may be coming down and his body is in a very, her body is in a very vulnerable situation. So I would recommend that study to anybody interested in the connection between meth in the neighborhood, which is a blight, certainly, and the presence of dispensaries.
Thank you. Do you have any comments or questions?
Sure, I'll make a comment. I'd like to thank the applicant. It looks like you've done your homework. I do feel, in, in view of what the surrounding residents have said, that it is not a, a commercial enterprise that is compatible with the surrounding community. So I would vote against it for that reason.
Okay. I think everyone's kind of put their comments out there, if we are prepared to make a motion.
Uh, sure, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Thank you.
I move that the planning commission find that the major use permit, UP 20-73, applied for by Paul Bernaccio on property located at 6914 Frontage Road, Lucerne, California, 95458, further described as APN 006-411-03, is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, categorical exemption class 115301, based on the findings set forth in staff report dated August 12, 2021, and due to the time change as amended today.
Second?
All in, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Me.
Motion carries?
I further move that the planning commission find that the major use permit, UP 20-73, applied for by Paul Bernaccio on property located at 6914 Frontage Road, Lucerne, California, 95458, further described as APN... 95458, further described as APN 006-411-03, does meet the requirements of Section 51.4 and Article 18 of the Lake County zoning ordinance and the major, major use permit be granted subject to the conditions and with the findings listed in the staff report and as amended today.
Before seconding, just a correction, it's UP 20-13, not 73.
Good note.
And second?
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Motion carries? Please note that the applicant or any interested person is reminded that the zoning ordinance provides for a seven-day appeal period. If there is a disagreement with the planning commission, an appeal to the Board of Supervisors may be filed. The appropriate forms and applicable fees must be submitted prior to 5:00 PM on or before the seventh calendar day following the commission's final determination. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to our untimed staff update. Nothing as far as any office news to go over? Are we allowed to ask any questions to you right now?
Did you have questions? You're certainly welcome to ask if you have a question.
One second, yes. One moment.
Nothing was said about the barbecue. There's something about a barbecue in there.
Okay.
And nothing was...
Public comment has been closed.
Nothing was determined whether it would be 6:00 or 9:00. How do we...
The motion was... As amended today, so the change has been approved. Thank you. Public comment has been closed. I'm very sorry. Thank you. Meeting adjourned.